County Board of Education meeting. Welcome to those of you who are listening online or watching online, and certainly to those of you who are in the room with us this evening. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, sir. And then, Mr. Bearden is under the weather tonight.
Indeed, Mr. Bearden is not feeling well, and we certainly wish him a speedy recovery. Also ask you to remember him in your prayers. And I know he would appreciate it. It hurts him not to be here. We appreciate him not sharing with us tonight. But we'll keep him in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I would like to welcome Lieutenant Darvin Couch for today's dedication this morning, please. If you all would please begin.
Let's all pray. For kind of a day we follow him over, we come to him once again today. Lord, we thank you for the state that you give us. Thank you for continuing to watch over us. Pray that we continue to be found good and good habits to do. Lead out and correct us. Or that we do that and be faithful unto you. As long as you have been with our board, as you have been with our superintendent, as you have been with each and every one that directs and looks over our student systems, as you continue to watch over our students and parents, Lord, we just do the best we can. If we'd be able to lead out in the way you see fit, that would be pleasing to them. One message, your members interfere tonight, yes, that you're very important. Very timely, you know, just heal him, be with him, be able to comfort him, please. One way, thank you for everything that you do for us, and continue to do for us. Lord, that's that you just always guide us and know that you will just guide us and pray that we follow your leadership and do what it has to do. Lord, we thank you for our Lord and our name of prayer. Amen.
Good evening, gentlemen.
If you'd please remain seated, I want to ask Mr. Robert Ainsley to come forward and lead us through a reflect.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ainsley. We all can be seated, please. Next up on the agenda is board reorganization. And we have Dave Leary. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, we do do this every year and typically rotate the chair position every two years. And I would like to take a moment to say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the chair for the last two years. It's been an honor, and I could not have asked for a better group of people to work with. They are individuals of character and honor, and they deeply care about our students, our teachers, our staff, and the Fannin County School System. So it's been an honor to serve alongside you. Thank you. So, Madam Superintendent, I will relinquish the chairmanship of the board to you to facilitate the selection of the new chair. And then we'll turn it over to him, and he will facilitate the selection of the vice chair.
Thank you, sir. In line, Mr. Bearden said, he has had the honor of serving as our chair for the past two years, and due to our policy stating that anyone that serves for two consecutive years cannot serve for another term. So that's what we see. So at this time, I would like to take any nominations for board chair.
Madam Chairman, for Tim, I nominate Mr. Cole for the upcoming year of 2024 as chairman of our board.
I will second that motion.
Do we have any other nominations? I'd like to place nominations at this time. With that said, I have a nomination of Mike Cole for board chair for 2024. Do I have a motion?
You do have a motion, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Three yes and one abstain. All right, thank you. With that said, I will turn the meeting back over to the new chair, Mr. Mike Cole. Mr. Ainsley, would you like to come and sit, please? Go ahead.
You can if you'd like. I don't really, I don't know.
Do you understand?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Okay.
So, are there any nominations for the vice chair?
I will nominate Mr. Bearden for vice chair for the coming year.
Second, that nomination.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Any other nominations? All in favor for Bobby B. and vice chair? It's unanimous, Bobby does vice chair.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the set time, place, and date of board meetings for 2024. And Ms. Allison, if you will pull that memo up for us, please. And we will continue with the second Thursday of the month at this location, Staff Development Center, at 5:30 P. M. Then we will run that in the, are you able to hold it in the news? Next up on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda.
You can be safe and go ahead and vote on that if you'd like.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation to use that the time at 5:30 on the second, third day of each month to be held at the Staff Development Center, this location? That is my recommendation.
Okay. We have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
You have a motion. And a second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's have a do-over. Number five, approve the consent agenda.
There we go.
Ms. Allison, if you will pull up the minutes for us, please. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, may I make a recommendation to approve this present?
Have that recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
You do have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Chair says it's unanimous.
Next on the agenda, special working conditions. I'm very excited to be able to honor this group tonight. Day three is the month that has Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. While I'm thankful that we have a day to respect and honor our law enforcement, I think we even do it every day in here, 365 days, not just one. We are blessed to have a very special group of men from the chair's office that's actually part of our Fannin family, who strive extremely hard every day working with our faculty and staff, not only to keep us safe in a preventative way, but they are proactive and they work with our teams. And each time that we have an issue, they actively reflect and brainstorm with our administrators to see how we can make things better continually. They are part of our family. They go above and beyond, and they are extremely hard hours, and I'm honored to have them in our system. And with that said, I would like to ask their leader and Lieutenant Shreve that they will assist in honoring these gentlemen.
Madam Superintendent, I'd love to do that. We've got a great relationship, as Mr. Miller said, with our SO. And also, actually, we're a city as well. SO has done tremendous things for us, and yeah, it's very appreciated. Sheriff Kirby and Chief Deputy Major Bowles couldn't be with us tonight, so we have them some recognition as well. But who we do have with us tonight, and I will go in right order, we have the commander of SRO units, Lieutenant Darvin Couch.
And along with this certificate, a tradition that we've started this year is for recognition for people that go above and beyond and have demonstrated wisdom and courage. We have presented them with an owl. So along with your certificates, this year, we would like to also present them an owl that was made by one of our board members, Mr. Bobby Bearden. If you all would just remain seated, we're going to come up and have a photo begin.
Actually, Sergeant Anthony Walton, who's actually working the middle school game tonight, so that's why he's not here. And then we're going to go into alphabetical order. Deputy Sheriff Jim Barrick. Deputy Sheriff Mr. Alzey. Deputy Sheriff Tony Sirianni, he is our new SRO that's assigned to West End. He's not four broke ribs, so he's not going to be here tonight. And it's not work-related, so it's nothing I have in West End. But I'd like Mr. Nader to come up to accept for Mr. Sirianni. And our newest member to our group is our sixth SRO. We have five schools. We got one assigned to the Hebrew School. And per popular demand, we'll try and get extra coverage. We got our Mr. Tommy, Deputy Tommy Shook, our last member to rest.
Mr. Ainsley, should I just come up and accept that for Gabe's mountain?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
I like to call these men peacemakers. Another role that they play, where?
Absolutely. Right, with that, Warren, if you can come around and help our...
As the board's coming up for pictures again, I'm not sure if that's the right, but the bags on there.
We are blessed. Thank you, gentlemen. And Warren, thank you for supporting us administratively. It's been a blessing. And next on the agenda, school president Steve Upstate, Dr. Leonard Shreve.
John, this one will be a quick one. The only school that met in between the two board meetings, Blue Ridge Elementary School. I was prepared to make some jokes about the rest of the sales being blamed, but typically my jokes all found on her face, so I won't do that anyway. So, Blue Ridge fundraiser request, none. Field trip, none. And then facility use requests, we did have those too, worth noting there. And then other honorable work from SGT. Went over the SGT's responsibilities, which again is something that's required, especially ahead of our charter renewal that's coming up next year. And went over some amendments to the Title II budget and changes to the master schedule over this semester. A mystery element over all those, demo update, and I wonder if some other updates as well. So again, that's the only meeting we have. This was not a mistake from who said, "No more meeting when it comes to the rest of the sale" thing, like. But just a reminder, you know, that we, the other thing is that the minutes are housed at the school level for anybody that's curious, that wants to see us official minutes.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, it's still happening, and I would like to invite High School Principal Dr. Scott Raisi forward.
I already started for, yeah, I'm starting for time.
It's hard to, every good thing that's happened in the high school, it's hard to make it fit in a small setting.
It won't be hard to get anything in, that's for sure. But, Madam Superintendent, Lord, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share some information with you. I appreciate you guys coming to see my presentation. I know that's probably driving force behind your being here, so we'll get right into it. I'm not getting clipped.
We have to scroll. It's flipped off, sorry.
That do not count as my time. Just slow down to scroll, it's not counting as my time. We'll start out with talking about some of our new faculty and staff. And then the first two there, Travis Sanderson and Tom Mistelus, they are brand new to us. They're in their actual fourth day at the high school, causing some of the situations that we had during the first semester. So Mr. Sanderson joins us in science, and Mr. Mistelus in social studies. And then we have Lakin Waye, who came to us in math. Wade Hottes came to us from the middle school. He's teaching math and engineering and online learning. He's doing a little bit of everything for us, he loves helping with football and wrestling. He's good people, you put him to work. Michelle Davis came to us from the middle school in math. Jennifer Barnes and Spencer Dawkins came to us as paraprofessionals. Then Perry Reuter came to us from the Atlanta area, and he's teaching math for us. And then Emily Bieber's in court connections and as paraprofessionals. The next slide, we have Seth Davis, he's doing our ag program, and he came from middle school. And then longtime humor teacher and humor wrestling coach Sam Snyder is working with 49% PE and also helping with wrestling. And then Wade Well is working with physical education, weight training, and also he is helping coach football. And then we just hired St. W., his son, Yavon Athan and James Kimmon, and they're so new, we don't have a picture of them. So that's our new staff. You know, last semester, we started the Impact Center, with y'all's blessing, and we were able to graduate 27 out of 27 kids. And we're just very proud of the work that has gone on there and the opportunities that some of our students have gotten as a result of the Impact Center. So far this semester, this fall, 124 credits were earned in the Impact Center, and eight students were able to graduate. Some students need to graduate early, some students need to catch up. And we have different needs, our students have different needs. And we're trying to meet the needs while with our students. And the Impact Center has definitely been beneficial for some of our kids. And then we do a mega test day. And mega test day allows our students to take some of those standardized tests that they're supposed to take, but a lot of times they have to sign up for on weekends or different areas. So we set aside a date, and this was October 11th of this year, and all of our juniors did the ASFAB, which is the Military Atitude Test. All of our sophomores did PSAT, and we had students who were able to do the SAT as well. So this is something that benefits our students, and being able to get these tests knocked out without having to go other places. And then this is probably the thing that I'm most proud of that we do during the school year. I know all the schools do it and do a great job with it. When I came here, I guess it's been about 13, 14 years ago, one of the things that impressed me most was the way our community embraced and respected our veterans and appreciated the service that our veterans. And I know we have veterans on our school board, and, you know, we greatly appreciate that, greatly appreciate what goes on there. I'm always so impressed with how our students are so respectful of our veterans. And, you know, it's one of those things that you really just have to stand back and say, "This is how it's supposed to be. This is what we're supposed to be doing." We had, this year, we had Master Sergeant Laura Ash come down. She is a Fannin County High School graduate, and she flew directly from the Pentagon to be our keynote speaker. And she said afterwards, "Of all the things she's done in the military, most intimidating thing she's ever done is speak to a group of high school students." So it's one of those things, we're very thankful for her for coming down. Another thing that, our program is put on by our students. Our students prepare the meal for the veterans. Our band performs, our students speak. And it just, this is something, just a great source of pride for me, was how we treat veterans and how we respect veterans. And then don't ramble. I gave the don't ramble number to this time, but what I'm going to focus on here is the growth. Last year, we had 151 students earn 232 credits as college credits and high school credits at the same time. This year, we're on pace to have 233 students earn 437 college credits. What's great about that is they don't have to pay for them. So they come out of high school with those college credits, and that greatly reduces the cost of what they have to pay when they get out of high school. So very excited about that, an opportunity for our students to do that. And then workplace learning continues to grow. You see pictures here, and if you scroll down one more slide, this is a list of all the employers in our community that have the benefit of our students working for them during the school day. So this allows our students to be able to work and earn high school credit, and also work and earn money. And so you can see here, including the high school, middle school, Corps of Education that have the benefit of our students working for them during the school day. So it's a mutually beneficial situation for our community and our students as well.
May I comment right there?
Yes, sir.
That those that new courses, college courses, apparently, it's grown along with students the first semester, the first quarter they take, that's probably the most challenging. Some people fail that sets the course for them. But this would seem to me would be a tremendous help.
Yes, sir.
To the younger person.
They can come out of high school with 30 hours of college credit if they do the math. So that's a great opportunity for them. And then with our Out of this World Science Night, this year, we had about 200 kids show up. That's where our high school students do science experiments for our elementary students and our middle school students, and they have a blast with it. You can see there's some of our faculty and staff having a blast with it as well. And that lady there in this far picture here, yes, that's a snake she's holding. So we did have some wild reptiles there in the media center. So that was exciting. And then our Apply to College Day. The great thing about this, we did this on November 9th, is our kids can apply to colleges and not have to pay the application fee. And we had about 120 of our students apply to these different colleges up here, and more than just what's up here. And so that saves them a lot of money. They get to apply and not have to pay the application fee. So that's something that is exciting for them and a great opportunity for them. And then we got our Freshman Reality Day. This gives the freshmen a little dose of what real life's going to be like. They are presented with these volunteers from the community that come in and do this work for them. They're presented with different scenarios. You know, you made $1,800 this month from transmission, or you're going to do, you know, or, you know, you got sick, you have to go to the hospital, different things like that. And they love it. And they all want to come up afterwards and talk about the things that they had overcome during the afternoon, or the things they had to overcome. So it's a good opportunity for them to just kind of see some of the things that maybe they might not go through, or get some help go through. And then CTA continues to rock and roll. You can see here, 94 pathways completed in the fall, 100 industry certifications or in pathway assessment. So that's a lot of kids that are leaving high schools with industry certification already, which puts them ahead of the game as they're going through to probably begin their career. And then here's homecoming. And, you know, our homecoming parade and our homecoming week is just really an exciting time, a great time for our kids. You know, school is about education, the kids learning, and things like that, but they got to have some fun, too. They got to have some experience, and they got to have some memories. And this is a great way for that to happen. You see up there in the top corner, that's the Grand Marshall float there. And that other guy in between, our superintendent, our representative there, and we got Hanson driving the float. But that's just an exciting time, and all the schools take part and have floats in it, and we appreciate that, appreciate, you know, their enthusiastic support. I noticed this year, when we got to the intersection at the courthouse, we were still going on the other street. So our parade has gotten so big that we're doubling back on ourselves. So that's awesome. And then you can see here the other things that go on. Our theme this year was Rich Fest. We had a car show, and we have the grand world champion of the car show up here on the board, Mr. Coleman, who's coaching the car show. That's all I heard about the next day from the kids, how awesome his car was. So, you know, that was a good time for them, and they got to do this and have those different things. And then, you know, here's a float, here, run like you're on fire. That's our cross country track float. I'm sure Mr. Reuter's probably in that float somewhere. If you look closer, huh? I don't know, something else. And then we also do, during the week, we do athletic events. We do Grow Ball, which is volleyball for boys, and we do Powder Puff, which is softball for girls. And this year, our winning volleyball team for boys was our seniors, and the winning team gets to participate, gets to play, gets our faculty team. That's our faculty team there at the bottom. They were terrible. They got absolutely annihilated. So I got to do better than y'all, hiring if I'm going to have to continue to do this Grow Ball. And then our Powder Puff teams there, that was our seniors won that. So it's an exciting week and exciting time, and just very exciting for our kids to be able to have those opportunities. And then Fine Arts, a lot of collaboration goes on in Fine Arts and our other classes. Our forensic classes works with our digital drawing and our art classes so that they can do some facial recognition work and projects on that. And then we have our gingerbread competition there, that our artists do, and the digital drawing. And then our theater department, you know, they had a successful first half of the year. They've done four class productions so far. Hopefully y'all got to see them. But that's our kids, and they will show off some of that talent that they have. And then our band is always, you know, superior in everything. They got superior rating in every caption, which is every category that they participated in their competitions. And Dr. Barnes, that way, when he goes to these competitions, he always competes in higher classifications than we actually are, because he wants to go against the best, and we always do very well. Chris Lindstrom, our run major, was the top four in run major, had 22 bands at our competition, Peach State Marching Competition. And then also Dr. Barnes, I want to talk just a second about him. He was a recipient of the Legion of Honor Award for the John Phil Tessa Foundation. This is presented to eight people in the nation. And you have to be nominated for it. It's not something you can sign up for and fill out paperwork and get. He was nominated. Normally, this goes to collegiate band directors and people like that. And so he was nominated, and he won. So that is a tremendous honor. Over Christmas, he either got to go or had to go to Chicago, however you want to look at it, to receive his honor and to take part in the clinic up there. So very proud of him and the way he continues to represent Fannin County. And just roll with us again, just more of a band, trying to catch up to the timer, because I know Benner back there on his timer. Individually, though, we got senior Blake Colley, who tried out for the district honor band. Not only did he try out and make it, he got first place, so he will be the first chair with the district honor band. So that's very exciting for him, speaks directly to his ability. We also had other members make the district honor band there. And you got to hear some of them here when they performed before the Christmas holidays. And then Drama, which our region one act competition, and we're able to have two people that were awarded the All-Star Cast, that's running the night, having everybody. So, you know, one act continues to flourish with all the talented kids that we have as well. And then dance, you know, we talk about all the stuff that goes on at the high school, and then we continue to add what's going on at the high school. So we like it, apparently, because this is, we had a dance last year, and there's just a picture of all the things they got to do. And then if you scroll up, here's a list of their accomplishments, and I won't read those, but they've been very successful. Our dance team calls themselves the Rebelettes. Now, I feel like the Rebels, they want to be called Rebelettes. And they came to me with this list of reasons why they should be able to be called Rebelettes. And I said, "Yes," and it kind of disappointed them because they didn't make it all the way through their argument before I said, "Yes." So they continued on to those reasons that they should be able to be called Rebelettes. So they're on Rebelettes, and they've been very, very successful, and that is a program that continues to grow. And athletics, six years in a row in the state playoffs in football. So that's, you know, that is sustained success. You can have a year here and there and have some good, some success, but when you sustain it for six years in a row, that's aggressive. And these are young men who were recognized for their individual excellence on the football team, about making the All-Reasons team. Softball, again, we had some players who were recognized for their individual excellence, and then were named the All- Softball, again, we had some players who were recognized for their individual excellence and were named the All-Region Team in softball. And then volleyball, again, players named to the All-Region Team. We also had the seven-day player of the year, Peyton Sloan. And then volleyball also had a lot of success as a team. They made it to the Sweet 16 in the state playoffs. Peyton Sloan set the new school record for 1,082 kills. Did you know this often? And then Matty Culpur set the new school record for 979 career digs. So very impressed with those two young ladies and the team as a whole for the success that they had. And then here we go, we have the flag football this year. We are, we're blazing the path and we're towards the flag football. Putting pressure on these other schools to keep up. We were able to get a grant for $7,000 from our friend Lake Foundation to be able to start our flag football team. And we're able to successfully complete our inaugural season and got the first ever flag football win in school history. We defeated Lafayette 50-0. It's hard to win 50-0 in flag football, but we got it. And then cross-country, we did recognize cross-country here for their success. But just wanted to touch on that again. The third place state finish in region championship for the boys team. The third place state finish is not up there, that's the highest finish in school history. And then the girls team finished fifth in the state and won the region for the fourth consecutive year. It's unheard of. And the fifth place finish in state was the highest in school history. And then we have Lindsay Holloway, who was the Double A state runner-up, and Zach Rockberry, who was the Double A state champion. And they both set the school record for the 5K. I don't remember when, I'm sure Mr. Ruth got it, about to lose it, but I don't remember exactly what the time was. But they both set the school record this year. So a lot of success with cross-country and that will continue. And then just talking about some of our coaches. Coach Jacob Reese was the defensive line assistant coach of the year for Double A. Coach Jeff Puna was the defensive backs assistant coach of the year for Double A. Now, this is a state award, this is not a regional award. And Jeremy King was the athletic trainer of the year for Double A. So very, very proud of those guys. And then this picture right here, this slide right here kind of epitomizes Fannin County High School. These are, this is a picture of our basketball team, our dance team, our different students supporting our athletes in Special Olympics. And guys, they were all about it. But when we had our Special Olympics, our athletes leave for Special Olympics, we lined up outside and we cheered as they left on the bus. And then we had so many kids go over there and work and volunteer. And that just, that speaks directly to the kind of kids that we have at Fannin County. And that just, you know, to me, that's what it's all about out there. So I have to have that in there. And then we got to talk a little bit about 40 days. Forty days before Christmas, Seth, when you talk about Fannin County Lady River Basketball, you're talking about a storied history. Not only from a team standpoint or from an individual standpoint. So when you say any kind of record for Fannin County, you're in some, you're in some pretty elite company. And she was able to break the career points record with 1,417 points before Christmas break. And she's been going strong ever since. So she may put that thing out of reach for future generations. And she has also committed to play in Harris next fall, so we can all go up there and watch her. She's a big loss. And then just a thank you to SLOSS, interesting things that we've been able to do with SLOSS. You know, what Mr. Dan and Mr. Miller started with giving us that SLOSS a lot and allowing us to do the things within our schools that we think need to be done. Has made a tremendous impact on where we can really do some improvements and upkeep of our facility. Done. Any questions?
No questions, comment, keep up the great work, that's fantastic.
You said that you were done, you're not done, you just began it. And I appreciate all that you did and all of your faculty and staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is the Fannin County School System Homeless Protocol Presentation. And I'd like to invite our Fannin County School System worker, Mr. Andrew Pantrone forward.
Uh, what? Not one? There we go, okay. That's a tough act to follow up, not even yours exciting at that. Obviously it's a great thing captain at the high school. Thank you guys so much for having me tonight. Just doing our yearly review of the homeless protocol, the department of our Title I requirements. There is not a vote required on that because we've not made any changes. Just not many changes that have come through from Title I for us to amend. So just wanted to go over that. So when we think of homelessness, homelessness in the school system is a lot broader than probably what you're used to thinking of as far as just homelessness. A lot of times people think of people that are living in the regions in their cars, tenants. And of course those families do qualify as homeless. But probably what we see the most in Fannin County are people that are sharing houses with other families. So if I lose my home and I have to be there with my mother-in-law and father-in-law, we still qualify as homeless. We're what we call double up. That is what we see the most. To be close, any children living in hotels, motels, trailer parks or campgrounds. We do have several families that are staying in some of our local hotels right now. I think we all know the housing market's pretty tight in our area currently. When they're talking about trailer parks here, they're really talking more about a campground type of setting. So they have campers they pull in, all those two quadrants, those have gotten quite expensive too. So a lot of our families are pulling campers onto family lawns or to other people's property. It includes children that are living in emergency or transition shelters. So the North Georgia Crisis Network meets that criteria. Children that are abandoned in hospitals. Most commonly, we think about babies or about the safe floor where someone can have a baby leave at the hospital or a fire station and not be prosecuted for that. But we do have situations where children are taken to hospitals, maybe for medical treatment. Or maybe there's been some sort of physical abuse and people will take them to the hospital and just leave. And so they obviously would qualify as homeless. Any children living in, or sleeping in a public place that is not meant to be used for housing. I encountered a situation early on in my career where a young man was in high school. He was doing what we call the couch therapy. He would stay with his friend and he would stay with his friend and he would stay with next friend. Well, there were the occasions where we couldn't find a friend to stay with. So he would stay at the Waffle House because it was warm there, so that's where he would stay at night. Obviously qualified as homeless there. It includes any children that are staying in all those other places that we think of, in the car, in abandoned buildings, tent villages, over bridges, any of those situations. Any child living in substandard housing. And that is a tough one. When you think of substandard housing, if you picture it, you think of a really red house, shattered windows, holes in the floor, no power. Obviously that would meet that definition. But I always try to remind our staff that it can also be the nicest home on Lyric Lake. But if you don't have power in that house and you can't heat at the home, you can't cook in the home, you don't have any water, you're not able to meet your basic needs there. You can still qualify as homeless if you can't meet your basic needs in the present day. So it could qualify as substandard. Any of our minor children could qualify for living in those situations. And then other company, this is a growing population or a population that we see quite a bit. Children that maybe left with great parents, just different situations, parents just leaving there, go off, individual joint situations, substance abuse issue. They live with the great parents, but there's no custody transfer. And so those children qualify because the parents don't have, the great parents don't have the legal rights. So they qualify as homeless. So what we do, we want to identify students as homeless, is we make sure that they can go to school no matter how long they've lived there or how long they have been with us. So if we, I would say, if you see example, if we have a kickoff truck that pulls up tomorrow morning, we're gonna get those students enrolled and they can start right away. There's not like a six-month window, there's not a week that you have to wait. We want them to start right away because that helps them, it closes educational gaps and makes sure that they have more meals and a safe place to go. So we want them to start immediately. They have the option to attend either the school of origin or the school that they're zone for. So an example is, I grew up an Eastside girl. My whole life, my whole family's on the Eastside. My husband came looking for better and came to the Eastside. He was a Westsider. So we now live on the Westside of county, my son is a Westside graduate, West Virginia graduate. If something had happened and we needed to go stay with my family on the Eastside and my son couldn't stay at Westbin, or I could have chosen for him to go to Eastbin. So I get a choice there. And that seems like a little thing to you and me, but it's really important to a student whose home life has been turned over. Now they don't have their own paper, maybe they're sharing all this substandard stuff and they're just kind of, you know, struggling. That keeps them a stable environment at school for a good part of their day. And they have that best friend, they have that teacher that they made a connection with. Not only that, but we will treat for them. So we would best them from the Westside to the Eastside or the Eastside to the Westside. And Mr. Eflin can tell you, I've had a pump in this week actually. So he has been really great to work with and make sure that that happens quickly for our children so that they can, we can help our families. Especially with gas prices being high, that really does help out a lot. All of our children enroll within ten classes just like our children that are not homeless. We don't discriminate, we don't have a homeless classroom. And we do those things while we're making records. Georgia's pretty good about getting those records too, it's pretty quick, but some states are a little slower about that. So we're gonna get them in right away. We're gonna start them, we're not waiting for school records to come in. They'll start within 24 hours of registering in our school system. They also qualify for services. If there's an IP or special services that they need services, they still qualify for those. They don't have to start on a prescription, but maybe some stuff that we have to do for our requirements in Georgia versus in other states. But we're gonna make sure they continue to get those services. And they qualify for free lunch automatically. You don't have to reschedule lunch process, it doesn't take very long for that to add up. So that way we know that they're getting, they're getting good nutrition, they started nutrition department, without having to worry about that pill. We don't segregate them, as I said before, based on homelessness. And then one of the newest things that was added several years back is they receive full or partial credit for coursework. So as you know, we're on a block schedule. In Fannin County for 10 through 12th grade. But not all school systems do that. Some school systems do it where they go to a class all year long instead of half the year. So sometimes it creates a problem when their train's running in. So we've developed a way to where they get partial credit, they don't lose credit. When homelessness happens, sometimes they move, it may be multiple times. They can get really disurge into a student if they feel like they're never getting credit. This is a way for them to kind of stay on track and feel successful and not feel defeated. We want them to have that high school diploma because that will help them hopefully break the cycle of homelessness. And this is just our protocol. It just kind of outlines what we've met over. And two works without a community train on that. And if someone has agreements that don't align with their policy is being implemented, and I will help them with that. But not all of them so far. We really work hard for all of our students to make sure they get into a comment, because we want our students to succeed. We've not at this point ever had previous. Any question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a suggestion to your staff? What agencies other than y'all have defined these kids?
So we work pretty closely with the North Georgia Crisis Network. You know, we have students that come in next to the area or for border counties and they will want to enroll in schools. So we make sure that they get, they let us know, hey, we've got some students coming. We make sure that they get enrolled to get enrolled timely, make sure that they have what they need to start school. We work with like anyone connected, they know that something's going on with a student, health department, CFAC. A lot of times they'll call and say, hey, you know, this family's going through this, can you reach out to them? And then a lot of times, our teachers will notice something. Best drivers are great at it because they've noticed that they're now getting off to a different, there's a change. And they'll notice that. And so I'll reach out to the family. Sometimes when I train parents, because you train your family members too, you know, your parents, because they keep moving around to what's available to them, should they encounter this. Sometimes parents will reach out and say, hey, this is what's going on, but I want my child to stay at the school. Or, hey, my little boy's best friend, how's this going on? Can you help them? And I've never reached out to a family and offered them assistance where they weren't very, very grateful for it.
Just thank you for, because I know personally that I called you and you took right off on it and that was a great need. And I just want to tell you, I do appreciate it. You are real, this is real, and thank you for what you do.
Well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Dan, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Chair. Next time on the agenda is facilities updates. Mr. Dan?
Again, at again, board, facilities there, go ahead, Ms. House. This is at each of our locations. We were fortunate enough to have first amendment auditors visit us in Fannin County. We didn't go to the schools, but we got wind that they were in Killeman County possibly coming this way. And sure enough, they showed up here to the board office. So we notified all the schools to, you know, be prepared, be what to expect and what to do, what not to do. But cause of all that, again, going back to our SROs, the comment was made is why don't we post something at all of our entrances towards somebody's on that campus that doesn't have a reason to be on that campus, they're trespassing. So of course the no weapons and everything, we've always had that again. So this is at each of our entrances, the multi entrances at each location, so that's been taken care of at all. We got some more signs that we want to put up, lots are on campus, playground areas and everything, it's new on the internet, helps us. So we're working with the principals on that. Thank you, Ms. House.
So anyone that enters property has to go straight to the office today.
That's what, that's what they're supposed to do, Mr. Reese. And I guess, especially during school hours. I bet at times that sort of thing is different. But during a regular school day, they don't even have a parking lot, just chilling out in some spirit.
How is the public, you use the playgrounds and the hall fields after hours?
After hours is different, but it does say that on the signs that during school hours, you must check in at the office. Wow, Mr. Matt, this is technical difficulties. Matt, several slides out to Agassi. This goes back to several weeks ago. The water has been run to the new slab from the greenhouse, I mean from the Agassi. The power, we're waiting on the electrician to come. The electrician's supposed to be there on next Tuesday. Keep on, Ms. House. Keep rounds right there, Ms. House. No trouble, no trouble. So again, the light's picture on here was as of today's Thursday, was as of Tuesday. Because of timeframe and getting the agenda posted. So when we get that last picture, you see some raptors up. I got a little black one in this house. So that was Tuesday. So I was up there today around lunchtime, all the walls, the frames around the walls are up, the door frames are up. All the, all the raptors are up, they're actually tying the raptors together. I spoke to the installer today. Bowls are up, raptors up, the side frame is up, electrician's scheduled for Tuesday. Once the electrician works are complete, an inspection will be requested. Once the inspection is passed, then we will get the power installed. Power's gonna come from the other side of the parking lot, a big long span, I hope to the right there. Once power's connected, power's hooked up, we'll install the propane tank. Once propane gets hooked up, water be hooked up, the driveway's gonna go to the right of the building right there, to the behind the greenhouse, just for future use. Saying, we'll build a store, build back behind, I'm sure there will be one of those stores built. So the completion of the actual installer should be by the end of next week. Now that doesn't mean the building's getting ready to be built. But again, the installer should be done by that time and then we got some internal stuff we've got to do. So we're getting very close. I wish I could keep you up exactly where we've liked, stop using it, rather than just keep doing this stuff.
Mr. Dan? Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Chair, next time on the agenda is a current budget amendment. Miss Dan?
Good evening, that is the superintendent for. So our first act we have for the night is the budget amendment. So this is just our SLOSS, and we can scroll and they don't, and really we're mimicking, we can scroll a little bit more. We're moving 450,000 out of that function, 4,000, up to our other two functions. So then it normalizes to where actually our actual expenditures are. But we're not increasing our total expenditures, we're just moving around where our action is.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to, as presented.
We have a recommendation to... We have a recommenda- recommendation to approve this budget. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion pass.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve district financial report. Miss Danner?
Uh, we have our November thirtieth financial segment. Uh, we have our general fund, we're at forty-one point six six percent complete for this fiscal year. Um, it shows our year-to-date revenues, expenditures, our occurrences, um, and we continue on. And this is our sloth expenditure report. This has the old budget next month. We will say where the budget will be adjusted for the budget. It was just a very good budget amendment, though we have assets that is one hundred ninety-three point seven six percent on expenditures, uh, that are going to be handled around and continue to our session revenue, um, that has us through the month, and then our student, our store, uh, nutrition report is our final.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve this presented.
So we have a recommendation to approve the district financial report. Do I have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion pass.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is sloth update. Miss Danner?
Okay, so we have received nine hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents in December for collections in November. And we also received a catch-up of one thousand six fifty-five. These are big dollars to take up there. We are on track, still, for finishing our sloths in September twenty-twenty-four. We have two point six percent growth from prior year.
Another local chamber office.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve amended FY twenty-four salary supplemental pay.
Okay, I'm gonna go really slow on this, so I want to try and make sure everybody's listening and anybody else can follow what I'm trying to, to go over from the governor's office, and then I'll go back through after the planner has been giving some examples and explaining it. Because as everybody knows, the governor came out just before Christmas and said he's giving everybody a thousand dollars. So, um, this is Governor Kent's amended FY twenty-two four budget recommendation, and it includes three hundred sixteen thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars in funding for our district for a thousand dollar salary supplement, which is for our education educators and support staff. The amount of the grant was determined based on the count of certified and support positions that are earned in the quality basic education, QBE state funding. And our district earns QBE funds for positions based on our student enrollment. Our QBE earned positions funded in the supplement that the government gave us is for teachers, RBC teachers, um, parapros, human parapros, or special ed parapros, not all parapros, some clerks, counselors, psychologists, social worker, technology specialists, lab supervisor, special education specialists, assistant superintendent, secretary, accountant, principal. And then our non-QBE state funds for satisfied positions vary across the programs, but generally earned based on student enrollment. Non-QBE positions funded in the supplements include the school nurse, your CTAE acts in a day a year, young farmer, your career technical teachers, um, extended day a year, and your nutrition workers, your custodians, your bus drivers, and preschool disability teacher. So the total count of funded, these funded for nurse nutrition, bus driver, and preschool disability positions are based on formula earnings. The custodian count is based on the DOE reported positions as of October twenty-twenty-three count. And the CTAE positions counts were reported are based on the DOE Department of Education has since December of twenty-twenty-three. So that is how the governor determined and gave us three hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, and then I'll keep going and continue to explain. Our district also got eight thousand, this is under twelve dollars, funding for pre-K teachers and assisted teachers through the lottery-funded pre-K grant issued by the Department of Early Care and Learning. So our request is to approve to pay a thousand dollar salary supplement to all benefit eligible personnel who are current employees of the Fannecan School System as of the payment date. And that also includes any people who were retired people that came back to us that are working forty-nine percent. An example, our new coach is the forty-nine percent. So all anyone working forty-nine percent, because they're here every day, um, would also receive forty-nine percent of that supplement. Substitutes and contractors are not eligible for the salary supplement, and the plan would be approved to make the payment between January eighteenth and January twenty-third. The goal would be the eighteenth, we don't know what highs and whether everything can do. And then we would be using the general fund to augment and make whole the difference of what is not provided by the state, which we anticipate to be approximately a hundred sixty thousand dollars. Then let me kind of go through just a little bit more to explain. The funding, like their numbers, they, they funded two hundred eighty-five, twenty-five one positions, they say. We have four hundred and fifty approximately equal. And they funded two point five one nurses. They did not fund any assistant principals. They did not fund, um, all the psychologists. They did not fund six point two percent for all the teachers who live in the [inaudible]. They funded the medicare. So there's so many different funding pieces, because they did fund what the numbers were for custodians for social security. So that's why we can't come up with an exact. This is the difference. And the next thing is we wanted to request to explain the payment. So if we have two people that were hired tonight, or we have somebody hired tonight, they would not necessarily, if they're in sick working on the day that they're paid that eighteen, they call back for the supplement. But if they're not in PCG, we would have to give them their check to get their first check, because they wouldn't, if they're not on board, then they can't, we can't pay them that eighteen. If someone left us and they're not working on that eighteenth at all, they've already resigned, then they would not receive the supplement. Um, so.
That was the governor's rules, was part of the [inaudible].
That was again, the curriculum, they asked questions for the governor, because they had asked questions, what if somebody leaves? Do you have to pay them that check where they're at? And remember, if you pay these in those seats, at the time of the, at the date of the payment. Um, so I think I'm covering it. Do you have any questions?
Oh, come here. I think that speaks highly of Fannecan, who are superintendent, seeing the importance of those non-fund positions that we typically have. Businesses don't, they don't stand their local funds for some positions because it's economical.
Correct. It's very hard, how do you determine to have nurses?
I think that's one of the reasons we called Fannecan, and we can evaluate our system.
And, and the open.
Kids first.
I did want to say too, but if this is approved, then that amends our general fund budget, and later in the year, I will give you those exact numbers in that, in this budget.
I'd like to say that this board and, and this administration has been fiscally, fiscally conservative for many, many years, and I'm very, very thankful for that. I'm thankful that we have the reserves that we can pay all of our employees the bonus and not just the formula that, that was presented. We value every single employee, and I'm very, very thankful that we're in a position to, to make them whole.
Thank you. We appreciate that very much. With that said, the recommendation would be, um, parts to approve the grant to spend it on the supplement from the governor, and also to approve the expenditures at the local funds to make sure that everyone employed by the Fannecan, that benefit eligible qualifies for the thousand dollar salary supplement. With that said, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve this presented.
And I would like to take this, uh, time to make that motion, and I'd like to ask is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion's passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Miss Danner. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the twenty twenty-four, I'm getting an old twenty twenty-five Fannecan school calendar. Mr. Danner?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, again, I were, I forgot something about facilities. Right, that's one thousand and eleven, dark waters completed since July the first. These things are parking lot, they're actually, I started deploying equipment there today, start cut trees, some new start on that parking lot this way.
Awesome.
Uh, calendar, uh, uh, people hear that I'm the calendar chair. I've got the honor of being the calendar chair. So again, the calendar chair is just one member of this, I don't make the calendar, I don't print the calendar, I help facilitate the calendar creation. There are eighteen members on the calendar committee. Uh, there's three from the district, and then there's three from each school. Uh, we do request that admin from each school, the parent liaison from each school, and then also the SGT parent representative of SGT, uh, be on that committee. Uh, so we had a, a calendar meeting, we set out on September the twenty-sixth, from meeting for December the sixth. Fifteen members, not to attend, one parent liaison had a conflict or schedule, two parent relatives had to miss because of a, of an unscheduled medical. Um, so when we, when we all do the, to start a calendar, I do always have a sample to go by. I take the previous year's calendar, vote out there from them on the new year, this was last year, and then we always tell them, the committee, that we want a hundred and eighty school days, we want ninety-first semester, ninety-second semester, we're gonna have ten PL days. So that's the, that's where Congress will, yeah. Um, then, then we present the sample, then each school has input from their staff members and their, uh, of their schools on what their people have told them, because they know they're on the council committee. Uh, then, uh, the committee then takes recommendations and discuss, and then, uh, that's when the fun begins, because, you know, you got one school that wants, uh, uh, wants, uh, four days of pre-planning, you got one school that wants one day of pre-planning, so again, this is their hashtag. Uh, I think we got a couple of members here, uh, it was less than two hours this year from where we're bringing. And, uh, we did come up with two calendars. So saying all that, uh, this is option number one, I think, Ms. House. Uh, this is option number one. The green number, or the green, uh, days are PL days, professional learning days. The yellows are holidays. Okay, so food is scribbled there, and it was adamant on the committee because we had so much PL days this year, uh, in this building, uh, we would take a whole grade level, we'd bring them over here for a day. Uh, so when you bring all the fifth grade here, you got twenty teachers here, which is wonderful for PL, but then you got twenty day, or you got twenty teachers, that's our schools, so you got twenty subschools in here. So they were adamant about trying to get some of our PL days throughout the year, and then we're gonna make every, every weekend, whatever calendar passes, that our PL days, we're gonna try to stop pulling teachers out of classrooms. Uh, I'm sorry on that. So the, uh, option two, again, very similar. The difference in this two, uh, is, uh, this one has a full week of a holiday, uh, in fall and October, and then the, uh, the big difference on two, uh, one and two, is that the Thanksgiving break is only three days. There's two PL days in there instead of a week. Um, so we sent this out to vote to the faculty and staff, and we all do it by Google vote. So two hundred and twenty people voted online. Those percentages are not what percentages, like, [inaudible] elementary there's got fifteen point nine percent, that's fifteen point nine percent of the two hundred and twenty votes. So this is my [inaudible]. So of those two hundred and twenty, eighty point nine percent people voted for option one, uh, not eighteen point one voted for option two. We did have eight paper ballots. We did have some people who are [inaudible]. So if you take the eight, uh, you take the two twenty, that's not online, and the eight paper ballots, that actually puts a percent, people on six percent as opposed to eighteen point four percent. So diplomatically, uh, uh, I would like to recommend option one as the calendar vote for twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this presented.
A recommendation to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Fannecan school calendar. Do I have a motion?
You do have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Motion pass.
Hopefully we have this posted online, as well as the twelve-month calendar, twelve-month employee calendar posted, no later than Tuesday, hopefully by the end of the day.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve technology items as surplus. Mr. Mattis?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, or good evening, Lord, and Miss Miller. I had you at the sitting last board meeting. We had several items that we were going to salvage, and some of these items, we're going to surplus and sell them on Gov. deals, and we have done this several times in the past, and it had really good success, making back some of our money for these items. So if a hurry, I will list them, and, uh, that, that is, uh, how about an eBay for government entities, and so they will, uh, people will bid on that, and then, uh, they will come and then pick the equipment up and then pay us for it. So that's what, as you can see there, we have demos from my office and then from each school, or some items that we helped to be able to sell, Chromebooks and desktops and some iPads and things like that that sold pretty well. And, uh, I will say that they, there will be no identifiable data on them, we'll take off all the, you know, we will wipe them out, clear them out, take the [inaudible] out, whatever, whatever we need to do, so that they're, um, completely clean of any data anytime of the whole week, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this presented.
We have a recommendation to approve technical technology items as surplus. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor? Motion pass.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve more quality D I B, Governor Rook.
Good evening again. Thank you, man. Uh, so, uh, for this time, uh, in previous board meeting, we had a policy that, um, following our policy, or policies, uh, that we tangled at previous board meeting for public review, and, uh, so, so that was done, and in this board meeting, uh, I'm, I'm coming to you for, uh, to ask for approval, uh, for this policy, uh, policy D I B, and this has to do with our financial reports. Ms. House? Thank you. And, uh, just as we talked about the previous board meeting, uh, we are al- we are already following these procedures. Uh, these are the financial procedures that, uh, we, we need to be following, and so this policy is being put into place to match the procedures again that we're already, already following, those financial procedures. So with that said, uh, I'd like to ask for your approval, uh, to, to approve for policy D I B financial reports. B financial reports.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve this presented.
So I have a recommendation to approve Board Policy D I B. Do I have a motion?
Sold.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
We have a second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is personnel, if you all want to take a minute to open your personnel sheets. First, I want personnel agenda, personnel sheet is to rescind the prior approval. Last month, we approved, or you all approved, an employee that recommended to then decline the job once they were called in, about that they were the most recommended approved. So with that said, I would like to make the recommendation to rescind the prior approval of Flitley Russell. I make that recommendation.
I make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Excellent. No one objects, I'd love to take this next group collectively, they're all resignations, they will have different effective dates, but I will read those dates after the name. That said, first resignation is Georgina Arnett, effective 1/5/2024. Tim Witten resignation, effective 1/9/2024. Amanda Nicole Fish resignation, effective 1/12/2024. Carolyn Thomas resignation, effective 1/16/2024. Robert Enslie resignation, effective 1/31/2024. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
We have a second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Next, group is recommendations, and it's all pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. First name is Kelsey Mayfield, for professional staff, effective 1/12/2024. I make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
Sold.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you. If there's not any objections, I'd love to take the next group collectively, in a completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, is all for classified staff. They do have different effective dates, so I will read those dates after the name. First one is Kara White, effective 1/16/2024. William Wall, effective 1/29/2024. And Robert Bobby K. Walter III, effective 2/1/2024. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
Sold.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you. Next recommendations are substitutes to be voiced, and they're all pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. I would like to take them first group collectively, if there's not any objections. There are officers, two teachers, all of the same effective start date of 1/16/2024. And that's Evan Clay, Mike Sarah Davis, Chris Vicki. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
I'd like to make that motion, do I have a second?
You have a second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you. The last is pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, is for substitute school nutrition employee, effective 1/16/2024. And it is Minerva Mayer. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
So I have a motion and a recommendation. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, Superintendent Collins. Mr. Chair, congratulations, on the start of service for this year's chair, and if this year was here, I would congratulate him as well, but that would be great, and it is an honor to work with each of you all. You never fail to get your phone when I call, and that is appreciated greatly. Since we met last time, we had light Christmas, and it was wonderful, so kudos to the elementary principals that rocked the little crazy and made that holiday a get happen for everyone in your school community. We had professional development when we turn back, when we return back from Christmas break, and we have some hardworking teachers. Teachers are where it all happens. The only reason that we have administrators is to support the work of teachers. We're supposed to, I call it clearing the runway so that they can take off and do their job. And we're listening to their voice, we're trying to hear them, and hopefully returning back to where teachers are masters of their craft, and masters of the relationships in their classroom, because that's where the work is rooted. And we hear the conversations and the work that they were doing when they returned, to be it what it's become of Black people. So thank them for that. Dr. Ramsey, your presentation, spot on, I appreciate you, you are an administrator, definitely knows how to clear the runway, you take care of people doing it, and your kids, and I appreciate your dedication and the culture that you built. Every time that you have a need for a student, you have faculty lined up, ready to be that deep. SROs, I appreciate them attention, they're a wonderful group of hands, they are family. But for Dr. Ramsey's presentation, that list of employees and employers, sorry, not employees, employers in our community, that provide jobs for students to have world-class experience, speaks volumes to whom we are as many as we can. Robert Enslie. Forty-five years in the Van County school system. Started at Edworth Elementary and kindergarten. Twelve years teacher, sixteen years administrator. Now you're retiring. Effective day of February 1st. Kelly, I'll be praying for you, praying hard. I know that you made a difference in people's lives in this speech volume, it's to you. I know that your transportation team is going to celebrate your creativity, and I am reading forward to that, and I know, unfortunately, more fortunately, Darren Lucas and I are committed to making a chamber appearance, but we're going to do our best to be there with you as well. Robert, your reputation and the years that we've worked together makes me confident that you'll support the transition of the income in that to direct your transportation. And I'd like to let everyone know tonight that I to direct your transportation, Stephanie will be Chris Dury. And this jury invited him to be here with us tonight, and he's here with us tonight, and now he's excited to get started working with this transition. With that said, we'll be gathering in the morning at 8:00 at the transportation facility to recognize and celebrate Robert's retirement, and to welcome Chris in his new role, and to officially implement the transition leadership for our transportation team, and I think the transition's in good hands, and we are blessed. With that said, Mr. Chair, I said enough.
Well, it's time for the board comments, so Chad, could you? Thank you, sir.
First of all, I said congratulations to you. Sure, you did a great job in person, I would also say, one of the jobs was that I'm Terry as a chair. The last two years, learned a lot, great leadership, which I said under that before I was chair, so I do appreciate you, appreciate your leadership and that, how well you did as chair, so I'm glad you said that tonight.
Thanks.
Definitely say thank you for these contributions, you know, dollars I should be, you know, the replacement. I hope that I can definitely, I mean, to definitely be a part of it. Mr. Andrew, wow. Your job, I'm worried, I'm sure I watch you see every day, I know that nobody really sees, I guess, or probably could today, so what you see every day is to be able to handle, and I do appreciate you, all that you do, that nobody ever knows about. Many things goes on in the system, I know, kids, and all half the classes, everybody notices, they had their hearts on their own, and that's all because you make scenes, and I do appreciate you, a long heart, I do appreciate all the youth, and everybody that works with you, I do appreciate you. Mr. Andrew, wow, forty-five years. Of course, I know some of that was under, scooped down the scale. Congratulations on retirement, I hate to say you, but I think that I've been appreciative of you, I appreciate that, I do appreciate that. I'm admiring you being able to retire, a long list to go, so I do admire you, congratulations on that. Ms. Collins, great job tonight, for your first time running the department, so, well, because Dr. Ramsey, wow, on a presentation. How do you pick out just little highlights? I know there's so much that goes on, I understand, I know you got a time, a little bit there, but we're gonna let that slide if you're okay.
That's a while.
Exactly, so. I do appreciate your presentation, it was wonderful, thank you. So the obligations and the visitor will be your own board, I do appreciate it, I appreciate you, everyone, you should, you should, then.
Mr. Dewes?
Kids first. And I would just reaffirm Ms. Miller's comments. And that's all I thought.
Mr. Bram.
Thanks again for attendance here tonight, thank my colleagues on the board for their support over the last two years. I want to touch on one of Dr. Ramsey's points during his presentation, he bragged so on the Veterans Day programs. I want to thank you, Dr. Ramsey, as well as all of our principals and administrators for facilitating those programs. Those students learn respect, and they learn about honoring our veterans through those programs, and I like you, I'm always so very impressed with them. But you helped to facilitate that, and I'm very grateful for that, and I hope to continue it for a long time. Thank you, everybody. I think I'm his family, and I don't get to work with you closely, but I pray for you every night, and again, you're my family. Mr. Enslie. My grandfather was an educator. He walked from where I live now, here in Fannin County, all the way down to Barracaddy, found a place he could shake off, and walked back, got my grandmother, and they moved down. His goal was to get close enough to Athens, Barracaddy's adjacent to Clark, to go to school at the University of George, and he did. He served as a principal for forty-seven years, and then to turn to school superintendent. And we're right in there with him. My admiration, we've gone back many, many years. You taught my children, and we're giving you felicitations, so congratulations on your And I hope that you enjoy some free time, some undeserved free time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to, you know, just go along with Chad on the fact that, Ms. Terry, you and your staff, just King James quotation, fitly put together, you know? Fitly joined together, what y'all do, and y'all take a situation, and before the day's out, you've already equipped people to have stuff they need to live, and some people never see that, but I've seen it, I've seen you work, and I'm very proud of you and what you do. Thank you. Dr. Ramsey, and again, a lot of those numbers that you put up there is facilitated, not because somebody else, because you had your hand on it. And people don't know that, but you personally put your touch on that to help those kids graduate, and I commend you for what you do, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Robert, I bragged on you last month, of what a great leader, I read it in the minutes, I mean, we could probably pull that back up, but I bragged on you, and here you are resigning, so I appreciate all you've done, and thank you so much, and I wish you the very best, and prosperity and health as you move into your retirement. Terry, what an honor it's been to work alongside you and to watch you, I'm just a country boy, so I had to watch, see, I'd said, hey, Chad, and go ahead and give you comments, and I realized that Terry is very professional and says, you know, Mr. Galloway. So I apologize for that, Chad, and I'll try to do better. He's a hard shoes to fit, but thank you for allowing me to work alongside you, and we are a family, and I just, I'm at all for that. In closing, then, if we could just remember to say a prayer for Bobby, and that he gets cured up real quick, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Y'all have a wonderful night.